Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Glad everybody's here bright and early this Monday morning. We're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Howard.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The moment of reflection of the times that we're in today. Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Burton.
Here.
Ms. Green. Dr. Henderson. Mr. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Levinstein.
Here.
Ms. Maida.
Here.
Ms. Manao.
Here.
Mr. Stridion. Mr. Walker.
I'm going to turn this over to our Acting Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Forget.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you, Board members, for being able to attend this meeting on a Monday morning with very short notice. Some of you may know that on Friday night, we received a directive from the Department of Health. And the announcement from the Department of Health stated that effective immediately, in accordance with Commissioner's determination, any person over the age of two must wear masks at all times indoors regardless of vaccine status. People with medical or developmental conditions that prevent them from wearing a mask may be exempted as documented by a medical provider. People do not need to wear masks when eating, drinking, singing, or playing a wind instrument. When masks are removed for these purposes, individuals must be six feet apart. All mask requirements must be applied. When we received that notice at 5:30 on Friday evening, our team began to consider how do we address this new mandate of six feet social distancing in cafeterias, in music rooms, chorus, band, instrumental. And if you extend it, you can even go towards speech services for students. So when a student doesn't have a mask on, we are now mandated to go six feet social distancing, and there was very little flexibility in the statement I just read to you. The previous guidance gave us flexibility. Previous guidance said try to physically distance to the greatest extent possible, and then layer mitigation strategies on top of it because they didn't want to prevent any student from in-person instruction. And everything we had to do was built around that. We then received another announcement on -- so let me stop there for a second. On Friday, when we received that, the senior team, as well as some members of the administrators' team, agreed to meet on Saturday morning to talk about how do we put a plan in place to address this specific concern. I can tell you that the senior team, the principals, and some of our operations staff, Mr. Velez, Ms. Lizarzky, Mr. Tyndall, all participated in this conversation to develop how are we going to implement what we need to comply with the six feet. We came out of that room with a plan, and we came out of that room with a very solid plan that needed to be executed immediately based on what we were being directed to do by the Department of Health. We felt solid about our plan. We were beginning to create the steps. Some of the steps were executed with regards to purchasing, reducing the purchasing of food and milk for the week because we were very concerned about whether we're going to be able to address this specific need. We contacted the board and asked for a special meeting on Monday and put all the balls in motion to get this addressed. Saturday evening, we received a second email. And this email came from the Governor's Office, not from the Department of Health. It was from a gentleman named Terrence Pratt, an attorney in the Governor's Office. His statement was that regulations by the State Department of Health effective August 27th do not require a six-foot physical distancing requirement, but the statement issued that same day by the State Department of Health did include the distancing requirement under certain circumstances such as eating, drinking, singing, or playing an instrument. Superintendents and school board members expressed concern after that announcement that if students had to six feet apart in lunchrooms, it would be very, it would be impossible to have every student in school every day. Pratt's email, which was sent to education groups today, read as follows. And this is from the Governor's Office. This is on Saturday. "I wanted to assuage some concerns that have been raised over the brief statement sent by Department of Health yesterday with respect to a six-foot distancing when students are unmasked and performing certain high-risk activities. The Department of Health is applying the CDC's guidance in this area, including, as follows, the link to the guidance from the CDC. Because of the importance of in-person learning," stressing the importance of in-person learning, "schools should implement physical distancing to the extent possible within their structures, but should not exclude students from in-person learning to keep a minimum distance requirement." So they're reverting back to the previous expectation. In addition to that release, the Department of Health then sent out a statement stating that P-12 school settings, after review and consideration of CDC recommendations for face coverings, I hereby adopt such recommendations, posing them as requirements. Accordingly, universal masking of teachers, staff, students, and visitors to P-12 schools over age 2, able to medically tolerate a face mask, and regardless of vaccination status, is required until this determination is modified." So the mask mandate is still in place. So what do we do as a district? We have a lot of things to consider. So we had a, we had an order on Friday night that said you had to go six feet. It was reversed back to go three feet, but don't, don't, don't keep kids out as a result of that. Add in your layered mitigation strategies. So we started to think about, so what is it that we do? So Orange County remains at a high transmission level. It's up red, as determined by the CDC. With this level of transmission and the new guidance provided by the Department of Health, the district will continue to review and implement strategies to reduce opportunities for the spread of COVID-19 to the greatest extent possible. We've got to keep our eye on that transmission level. Regarding times when students are unmasked and performing high-risk activities, the district will apply the CDC guidelines, and we are considering interpreting it as we will attempt to the greatest extent possible to achieve six feet social distancing by utilizing gymnasiums, libraries, primary playrooms, and outside tents for breakfast and lunch. So we'll go a little bit over and beyond. However, in schools where six feet's physical distancing will impact the return of all students to in-person instruction, physical distancing will be maintained at no less than three feet. In schools where three feet physical distancing will impact the return of all students to in-person instruction, physical distancing to the greatest extent possible will be complemented with the layering prevention strategies such as screening, testing of unvaccinated adults, continued efforts for improved ventilation, hand washing, and covering coughs and sneezes, specifically also staying home when sick with symptoms of infectious illness, including COVID-19. So we, as a district, are trying to take all of the direction that's coming out of the Department of Health, the revisiting of, the revising of it by the Governor's Office, and doing what's right for our faculty, our staff, our students, our parents, our visitors, our board members in this district. That's why we came up with that particular strategy. We're sitting here today because there may be additional guidance coming out from this, from the Department of Health early this week. We have reason to believe that because I was on a phone call with Mr. Hecht on Friday afternoon, who shared that additional guidance may be coming down early this week. In order for us to comply with all of these particular mandates, we need time to read them, understand them, and think about the implications it has for our students, our families, our faculty, and our staff. We have to look at our individual infrastructures of our classrooms, our school buildings, our community, to make sure that they are prepared to address the expectations that come down. With this sudden change and with these shifts, we find that, we want to make sure that our buildings and our programs are up to par and ready for our students to come back. We want them to be welcomed back, and we want a smooth and seamless transition for them to return to school. We don't want to have the pivots back and forth. In order for us to stay true to the expectations that the people who are in charge of the Department of Health are telling us, we are requesting that you consider pushing up the start of school from September 1st to September 9th. We have a plan in place. We do have four superintendent conference days. And Dr. Padilla and I, when we first created the schedule last year, agreed that we would only plan two superintendent conference days out of the four because we anticipated the possibility of some things that we would not know coming up for this year that we would need those two days for. Well, that was good planning, I would say, on his part and my part because now we need those two days. We seek to implement those two days on September 1st and September 2nd. And being that, that would give us additional time for a variety of things to do. Let me share with you a couple of them. Number one, it'll allow us to process all of the influx of registrants that are continuing to come into registration. During the month of August, we saw over 500 new applications come into the district, just the month of August. Now, take a normal year. When, on a normal year, when you're processing 500 applications, it's taking a look at the students and reviewing their transcripts and seeing where's the best placement to put the student for instruction. We now have a more complicated conversation to think about. What about the number of students that are in each building based on their ability to social, to physically distance, based on all of the other pandemic-related factors? So it's not a simple, hi, welcome to the Newburgh District, you're going to go to Heritage because this is a good place, pit for you. There are additional levels of things that we have to consider, and our registration team has to go through in order to place those students. I can tell you that on Friday, we put a full court press on registration, and we placed 150 students on Friday alone into the buildings. So for those of you, think about the stress that would be on a principal, thinking about the number of students that they're receiving on a daily basis, trying to get them programmed, trying to give them classes, and trying to comply with the pandemic issues. So that, that's one particular issue. The other thing is we're in final phases of conversations to come to a decision to work with the Newburgh Teachers Association and other bargaining units to complete the testing procedures for adults that are unvaccinated. So we are still wrapping that up, getting that in place as we were required to by the board action, I think it was two weeks ago. I can share with you additional information as you see fit, as you request, but at this time, that's the reason why we're asking for the consideration of pushing back the start of school.
So you talked about the first and the second. Mr. Forget, can you talk about the third?
Yes. I, so the third, which is Friday, would be a pandemic emergency day. We would use that day to continue preparing based on all of this new information, as well as getting the new entrance placed.
Thank you. Mr. Howard.
How do the pandemic relief day impact the 180 days?
It would be one of the emergency days that we had set aside.
Anybody, Mr. Levinstein, then Mrs. Maida.
So, well, Friday night, when you got this, this guidance that changed the way the plan was, and you went into, to figure out with your team how to, how to handle it. And just a couple of things that struck me is, is obviously, the biggest part is, is meals more than, than wind instruments. I'm sure they could deal with wind instruments a little easier. But not having the space for lunch, lunches for children. Are you, you're planning on going into the gyms in most cases? So does that affect the phys ed classes now that students are registered for and have to take, do all, so how does all of this play, number one? And the other thing is, do you expect conflicting guidance going forward in the next couple of days, too?
So let me address the first question. First question was, when we received the initial change, which was the Friday night guidance mandating six feet, we had some conversations about that. So first, safety, right? Think about safety first. So how do we space these kids out six feet? Whatever we have to do to do safety first. Then we thought about instruction. What's the impact on instruction? So once we agreed that we were going to have to pick up the gymnasiums and the primary playrooms and all those other areas, what's the impact on the physical education standards for our students? We believe that during the first marking period, we'll have an opportunity to do as many outdoor activities as possible for physical education so that we can possibly not compromise the learning standards that those students are receiving. However, when we can't do phys ed outside, it's finding alternative spaces within the classroom for those students to receive a different type of phys ed, which is also allowed rather than just physical activity. My team, anyone else want to comment on that first response? We're good. Now he needs to tell me the second question again.
Yeah, do you expect conflicting additional guidance coming in the next couple of days where you're going to have to rethink what you just rethought?
So.
Rethought.
I, I believe that we're going to receive additional guidance. I, I'm not going to comment on whether it's conflicting or not. I believe that we receive the guidance at the time that's most appropriate.
Mrs. Maida.
I just wondered, obviously, the challenges are immense, but what if, you haven't heard anything about sports yet? Like, are, are sports going, I mean, because they're practicing, correct?
We have heard nothing of.
Yeah. Okay. No, it's just another piece of it.
Mr. Howard, then Mrs. Burton.
I yelled her, but that's.
Mrs. Burton.
So, you know, I'm a little confused because, I'm confused because this should not be a new phenomenon, okay? We just came out of a COVID pandemic when there was last-minute, you know, decisions coming from CDC, coming from the Department of Health, coming from the New York State Department of Education, coming from the Governor, coming from all over the place. And I, and my, my, my main concern is why was this waited to the last minute to anticipate? Waiting for some entity to come and tell us what we need to do? When we've just come out of a whole year of, of having to anticipate, having to pivot, having to redesign, rethink, re-everything. And here we are, the last hour, waiting again for information and then responding in a way that, first of all, I don't even remember half of what you said because I don't learn that way. I learned by looking and seeing what I'm reading, not by listening, because now I have no clue what you just said, but it sounded good. But, you know, that's just, that's just my question. Like, why weren't we better prepared for this? We've already been through this. We should have known all the contingencies, possibilities going into the first day of school, which would have been this week. And now we're like, oh, we don't know what, we, we need to rethink everything? I mean, I, I just.
Let me clarify a few things, and I apologize that you feel that way, but that is not the, that is not the reality. We were prepared. If things were still the same as a last Thursday evening or Friday afternoon at noon, we were pretty much prepared. We had everything in place to address the three feet social distancing with the mitigation factors. At the time when the change came on Friday night and we started to look at things, we then began to explore some other indicators that were, were building upon us. The increased number of registrants coming into the district that we did not foresee, we could not foresee that. But as far as health and safety goes, we were ready to go with the three feet and the mitigation factors. One thing that we are still trying to complete is the testing of the unvaccinated, which was just, we were just asked to do that in a very short time. So were we prepared? We were prepared, Ms. Burton. But when, when a, a change or an expectation gets placed upon a school district, it makes you reflect and look at things very differently. And erring on the side of caution, because our kids and our faculty and our staff are that important to us, we have things that we can do better, but we were prepared to execute September 1st if we were going with the previous guidance only.
Mr. Baer? Can Mr. Baer respond?
Just to appreciate some of the detail around that plan, I think we've been meeting with principals virtually every day as a group, individually. We have done walkthroughs, Mr. Velez, Caitlin, Mr. Marie Sprender, and me, and the CNI team. We've gone into cafeterias, we've looked at how to space it out, buildings have ordered outdoor seating, seating when appropriate. We have scenario plans over and over and over again. Mr. Forget, last year, based on the CDC, had provided some information on how to risk assess, to look at scenarios like PTO meetings, faculty meetings, open houses, and look at the different factors that go into planning to keep safety in mind. We updated that risk assessment tool and met with every principal to talk about how to handle everything. As an example, a number, almost every building is doing some form of a kindergarten orientation. They either did it Friday, or they're doing it today or tomorrow. We went through with every principal, what is that going to look like? Starting outside, putting people in groups that are socially distanced, only allowing kids in the building with their parents for 15, no more than 15 minutes so that we maintain the CDC guideline of six feet masks, 15 minutes, so that there is no concerns around exposure. We've been talking through almost every example we can think of, not allowing, where we were lockers, where we were locker rooms. So we've been very well planned for this, but the, the guidance for months was three feet. And then at the last minute, they shifted that to a must-be six. That was the game changer for us, where we suddenly had to suddenly kind of, we were ready to go in almost every situation, I think, say, in every situation that we had in front of us.
I'm going to chime in as a former principal, and I'm sure Renee and Carol can, can really understand this. When you're a principal, you're putting together a big jigsaw, and that's your master schedule. And it gets more and more complicated as your school gets bigger and bigger. So when you're talking about Meadow, Temple, the middle schools, and the high schools, that is an unbelievable plan to put together a master schedule. Moving kids into a gym from lunch takes away precious schedule time that you have there. Even if you're planning on outdoors, what's going to happen Thursday when it's going to be raining here? So to ask, to put that thought process into making two separate schedules, one for three feet, one for six feet, is almost impossible because there's going to be more staff needed with three feet. It's just, it's just logical. So I really feel for you all, especially knowing this, Friday night at 5 o'clock, because I sent you the onboard article, when I got it right away, because to me, it was shocking that the state was going to do a quick six feet, three feet to six feet, and then that, you know, six feet to three feet, rather. And that makes me, as a former principal, have like a little heart congestion. Because what do you do to have your, your 90 minutes a week of phys ed, right? As well as everything else that you have that has time limits on them? 900 minutes for, for, what, how much is it for E&amp;L students? They've got to have that, and they've got to be in smaller groups. So I think, you plan the best that you can, and now Ed is asking us to look at just something different. So we, we need to just take a breath and, and do that. Can, can, go ahead, you go first, and then we go to Phil.
So, you know, and if, if you're taking what I said, is that you're not doing your due diligence. I know you all do your due diligence. That's, that's not what I'm suggesting. But, you know, when you talk about a risk assessment tool, part of that is also planning for the worst-case scenario. And so we have a rise in COVID, right? We've had a rise in COVID in this county for quite some time. And, you know, it, it just seems to me that, and I get everything that you said. I, I, I'm not suggesting that this is easy. What I'm suggesting is that here we are at the last hour, and I guess one of my other questions would be, you know, are there any other school districts that have, have, that, you know, I looked at Middletown, I looked at, you know, Monroe, what, very, their calendars aren't suggesting that they're changing. Are they changing, as far as you know?
I don't.
So is it possible that Newburgh is the only one that's in this situation, that we're trying to figure it out? And here's the other thing with pre-K. So last year, we had a decrease in pre-K. So to me, it just seems obvious that we were going to have an influx. Folks didn't know what the heck they were going to be doing in pre-K. Was pre-K even ready for, you know, for the influx? I mean, it just seems as if there's certain information that we should have been better prepared for, that's all.
Mr. Howard.
I'm not suggesting nobody's doing their due diligence and not preparing adequately.
That's it.
Thank you, Madam President. So first thing I want to say.
I'll get to you, Renee.
Very appreciative of the work that you guys do in central administration. I know it's been a lot of work, a lot of pivoting, 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 pivoting. To use a basketball term, you're a hell of a post player. You've got a hell of a pivot. But, but one thing I want to say is that it sounds like you guys are going in the right direction. Everything you, you explained to us, it sounds like you're right on point and, and you're ready to go forward. So I guess my concern is, why not go with the pivot plan? Because the plan that you explained seems like you are ready to do that. But at the same time, I want other people to understand, what makes this look bad? Going from one to nine. But people don't understand, that one to nine is Labor Day, the two Jewish holidays, the weekend. That's what's really making this look like you're going from the opening on the first to the ninth, when really, we're talking about two to three, two or three days. And I think we're just a victim of those numbers because it's really, the tail, the back end of that, we're already working. Those are already vacation days, and Labor Day, and weekends. So.
How do we, how do we publicize that? That's my question to you.
People need to hear that. Because when you say opening the school was supposed to be on first, and now we're saying on the ninth, people are like, whoa! But really, it's not, it's really, you're talking about a weekend, you're talking about Labor Day, and you're talking about the two Jewish holidays, Rosh, two days of Rosh Chana. So those are five days we had no control over. So we're really talking about the first, second, and the third. And my thing is, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I want to go back to something Mr. Daley also said. So you plan for the highest degree of expectation, and that's what we learned on Friday night. If they're going to change and do an expectation of six feet, we have to be prepared for six feet, even though they relaxed it to three. We need to be prepared for that. The worst thing we can do is to bring back students to a situation where we have to continue to pivot kids back and forth. We can't do that to our kids. When they return to in-person instruction, they need to return to in-person instruction, hopefully for the long haul. And we've got to create that environment to allow that. If we can't provide for that based on these new expectations that came Friday, changed on Saturday, I've learned, go above, hit the highest level of standard, build the highest level of standard, and then anything that comes at us, when you talk about pivot, it's a seamless pivot so that people don't get interrupted. That's what I learned as a result of this weekend. So could we open on the first with the three feet? Possibly. But is that going to have the long-term effect we're looking for? I'm, I'm concerned about that.
Go ahead, Ms. Green.
What all the, I actually have a few questions, but I'm going to ask this one first. With all the students that are now coming in, have you guys reconsidered virtual learning? Because if kids are virtual learning at home, that would give more space to school buildings for, for kids. So has, is that ever going to be brought back to the table? Because there are quite a few parents who want virtual learning.
Go ahead.
So thank you, Ms. Green. And yes, we're receiving those requests. At this point, we're being directed and guided at the higher levels that full in-person is the standard that we have to set and achieve in our school district. We understand that having the students in-person provides them an opportunity to learn face-to-face with a teacher. And that, that's really what we need. We need to be able to see these kids every day, make sure they're okay, address their social-emotional learning needs, address their instructional needs, address all of their needs, right? Working with the parents to do that. So when you receive a standard of that from the State Education Department, the Department of Health, the CDC, they're all compliant, they're all sending that same message. Get the kids in-person to the greatest extent possible. Our district, as a board and as, as a senior team, we define to the greatest extent possible, there are students that require, that are medically fragile, that are clearly defined, that will be reviewed by health services and our medical director, that will receive an opportunity for virtual learning. So it's not like we're not allowing virtual learning, but it's for a very specific population that would not be, it would not be appropriate for them to be in-person. Are we looking at last year's model of virtual? No, we're not, not at this point. At this point, we're trying to get every student back in the seat in the school, as directed by the Department of, the CDC Department of.
But they said that virtual learning can be looked at. It doesn't say that you should not do it. But I'm just saying, there's no way that this will go to virtual learning because in my mind, if there's some students that are at home virtual learning, then the three feet or six feet will be accommodated because not every single student will be in the building. So I'm just trying to look at it from a different aspect.
I don't think that we can answer that question and with a definitive yes or no. I think what we have to do is to track the data as we go through. As of today, our goal is every kid in-person, with the very few students that are medically fragile, being allowed to participate virtually. However, if we go through and at the end of the first marking period, we reflect on the data, and things start to shift or change, that data will determine what direction we take in guide, after guidance with the Department of Health. So it's not easy for me to say yes or no. It'll, it is, we will monitor and track the data to make the decisions that are the most appropriate for our kids.
So, yes, go ahead.
So building on Ms. Manao's building size and Ms. Burton's district size, my question is, I would think that when there's guidance that may take a 90-degree turn at Friday at 5:00 p.m., that, that say, a district like Chester can handle that better than a large district like Newburgh? For both the total number of students and employees and building size, and you would think that they could probably handle the change a little easier than we could. Is that correct?
I don't think it's fair to make that assumption on our, our sister districts. I think they all have their own unique needs, their own unique challenges, and I'm not aware of those challenges. So for me to answer that question would be really inappropriate. I know each individual. I know each individual district has their own unique situations. But I can tell you, and I want to make this clear, it was six feet reverted back to three feet. The decision we're making is, we want to make sure that we hit the highest level of standard and we're prepared, because if we have to pivot, we're ready to pivot. So I don't want anyone here or listening in to think that we're shifting just because of a six-foot mandate on Friday night. We're clearly aware that it went from six feet, and then on Saturday to three feet. But as a result of that, we need to put additional precautions in.
Do you have one ready?
In the event something else shifts or changes in the, in the numbers. Because we want consistency when those kids come back to in-person instruction. We want, don't want them in and out, in and out. This is one way we're going to try to protect that.
Go ahead.
So, so, which is what we all want, and your feeling is that we need to delay the opening to get this to, to a hundred percent of what you want, so we don't have to finagle things back, going forward?
I have no idea what the additional guidance is going to look like. I know that if we go for the highest level of standard, we're prepared for the highest level of standard. And then if they send down additional guidance, we can react to that additional guidance as we are being much more proactive than reactive.
Mrs. Maida, then Mrs. Burton.
Mr. Forget, do you think the, is personnel a, a big challenge here? Do you, are you looking for, or, or do we have enough personnel?
For personnel, we're going to have to take a look at that. Depending upon the needs of the students as they enter, we may need additional pupil personnel staff to support their, their needs. I can tell you, and I'll, I'll actually ask Dr. Spindler to respond to some of the food service situations we're in.
Yeah, so, right now, we're currently still understaffed for food services, so any, anyone interested in joining our Newburgh team, I want to put that plug out there. We welcome you on the board.
I don't think we're allowed to do that.
But we are, but we definitely are understaffed there. And we're also looking at an opportunity to bring back some lunch monitors to support us. We have some individuals that are on a recall list that we'd like to bring back. Also, increase our monitors and other people to support during those lunchtimes.
Mrs. Burton.
So, Mr. Forget, thank you. You know, I, I take it all in, and I'm not, you know, trying to be this, this mayday or one way or another, just trying to understand, right? Understand where we are and, and what is needed to best move forward. So, are there any particular schools that are struggling more than others because of the influx of K, you know, the, the, the pre-K kindergarteners coming in? I mean, what, what are some of those challenges? And, and, and when you talk about, going back to this risk assessment tool, I, I haven't seen it, I don't know what it indicates. But, you know, is it, is it across the board? Across the board, across all schools? Are some schools in better position than others? Are there lessons to be learned around that?
So, I can tell you that, for the most part, the schools are, are ready. Our pre-K enrollment did increase. We are now moving towards a waitlist at this point for pre-K, so we need to celebrate that. We finally have the numbers up in pre-K. If you ask me where my, my biggest stress, or our team's biggest stress is right now, our team's biggest stress is the middle level. Six, seven, eight is seeing a large increase in numbers. When you think about the infrastructure and the building of Heritage Middle School, it's not a traditional school building. It's got very, Andy can describe it a little bit better. It's, it's not configured as a school building. So for us to make it a, a classroom and address the things that we're required to address is very difficult.
Schools like Heritage and Bombay Cafeteria, they're very, very small. We all know that we're putting an addition, addition to Cafeteria Heritage because it was small before COVID, so just gasp, moment. Last week, we met with all the principals, I visited every school, and we decided with the three feet, we're going to put every student, going back to sit, reconfiguring all the furniture again. In Heritage, I can tell you that we're going to have a major problem. Another problem in Heritage is classroom size. Some of the classrooms in Heritage are 500 square feet, which is 270 square feet below the state standard, but that's the way the school was. So you get grandfathered into that. But we have to deal with those challenges. So today, after this meeting, I am going to Heritage to meet with Miss Mayne, to reconfigure her building. So in order for us to do that, in fourteen buildings, we did a little more time.
Okay, I'm going to call on Mr. Howard.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Forget, so, cutting to the rubber. This resolution allows you to do what? If it's not passed, where, where does that put you, or put us as a district as far as operating and going forward and doing effectively and doing the safety? What's, what's, what's the bottom line?
So, if, if the resolution doesn't move forward, students will return to school on Wednesday, the first. We will continue with the previous plan of three feet, and where not three feet, using the layered mitigation strategies to the greatest extent possible in order to, to ensure the safety of our students based on the, the expectations. By shifting and changing, it, it gives us a more, a, a little bit more time to really solidify those mitig, layered mitigation strategies. As I said to you, the universal screening of unvaccinated, we're still in the process of getting that done. That is one of the, the, the most widely used mitigation strategies we will have in the district, and we're not ready to implement that yet because we're still negotiating with who's going to do it and how we're going to secure those tests, because that was just asked upon us with a very short time. That gives us the time to get that mitigation strategy in place and solid, so that we, we can comply with it. As I said, instead of looking at short term, looking at long term. If we go and really implement what they asked us to do on Friday night, that's, that's the highest level that they could, and in all the documentation, I haven't seen anything over six feet. So if we start to think more in terms of six feet, based on the way the numbers are starting to move up, and I don't, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that those, those numbers start to shift, but right now, they're still, we're still red, high-level CDC transmission. Using that data to inform our decisions, go and create the most safe, the safest, highest level safety environment for our faculty, staff, and students, and, and parents. And then, if something happens or a new directive comes down from the Department of Health, it's already embedded and in place, or it won't take as long for us to, to create it. So it's, again, it's the sustainability. It's once the kids come in, we want them there for, for forever. We don't want them to have to go out. By rethinking this, and when we receive this message on Friday night, that's what the light bulb went off in our heads. Wow, they're ratcheting up expectations, let's go high, and let's stay high. That's where I see that, Mr. Howard.
So, my question is, Mr. Forget, what are the teachers going to do on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday?
So, number one, address the new expectations we have for six feet social distancing. So, taking a look at physical education, because that teachers are going to have some work to do to rethink the way they're going to deliver the instruction. Classroom teachers, you know, their classroom may be used at certain times to spread students out, so they're going to have to shift and rethink what they're, they're going to do. So I think there's, there's pandemic-related thinking and problem-solving and work that needs to be done. And then, Ms. Soto and Ms. Moriarty, can you just comment on the other things you started to plan with the principals yesterday?
Absolutely, so they'll be working on the new curriculum map. So they'll be reviewing those and aligning their planning to that, as well as setting up their Google Classroom. So in the event that they have a student who's quarantined, the Google Classroom is set up and ready to provide instruction to any quarantined student. They'll also be working, looking at their data, moving their students, setting their students up in the school page system and in the other data dashboards. There's a lot of preparation work to do so that they're really ready to start the year strong with their students.
And we met with our directors this morning to come up with a solid plan for Wednesday and Thursday regarding the movement instruction, looking at assessments, implementing common assessments, looking at our calendar maps, so that children have exams spaced out accordingly. So there needs a lot of work going to do for the start of the school year.
Mrs. Soto mentions Wednesday and Thursday, so Friday is, like, a snow day?
It's a pandemic emergency day. There would be, be no snow.
Okay. So, go ahead, and then I, I'm going to have to make a motion.
With, with the days that are added in a week, I'm assuming that we're still meeting our 180 school days plus for the whole school year?
As it stands right now, we're at, we will meet the 990 expectations, the hourly and the daily. We are in the process of reviewing the calendar to address the addition of September 8th and how we will accommodate that. I'm not ready to bring that forward yet, but I'm still working with council on that.
Okay.
This is, this is simply adding in the two additional superintendent conference days that weren't there.
And the eighth.
Were allowed for, so we had two, we're adding two more, and then we're using an emergency day, which is already planned.
And then you're including the eighth, because that wasn't on.
I have not addressed the eighth yet, I need to work with council on that.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'd like to entertain a mo, go ahead.
Can I just say, is the board adopting the Friday? Or we, you're calling the superintendent, you're calling an emergency day on Friday? So the board just calling the conference days, right?
So it's just, the two days.
Just Thursday, Friday, yeah, just Wednesday, Thursday.
So, it's the third and the fourth.
The district calendars reflect superintendent conference days on September 1st and 2nd.
No, not first and second. Yes, first and second, okay, Ed. I'm so confused, go ahead.
So formally, we are requesting that you consider September 1st and 2nd as the two additional superintendent conference days for this academic year, which will end the superintendent conference days. The reason we wanted to discuss Friday as a pandemic adjustment day, as an emergency day, is to communicate to our parents and our families that we will be taking an emergency day on Friday so that they can, they can begin to address childcare should they need it. So even though it doesn't have to be formally addressed to the board, it is really critical that we use this opportunity to communicate that schools will not be in session on Friday. We will also be working with communications to get out this, this to our families.
Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
That's what I just wanted to be clear, that we're just adopting the two additional days.
One and two.
The first and second, and the district is telling the parents that there will be no school on the third, okay? But not, not by formal resolution we're adopting.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda. Would you like to read the resolution?
Be it resolved that the board hereby adopts the district calendar to reflect superintendent conference days on September 1st and 2nd.
Anybody? Thank you. Roll call to add?
Ms. Burton.
No questions?
Well, we're going to do questions after we add it.
Um, yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manoel?
Yes.
That didn't pass us.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
So move, second.
Questions or discussion? Now, Mrs. Burton.
Okay, so the motion was to add in one and two, September 1st and 2nd, but still haven't talked about the school opening day as the ninth.
Well, that's what it's going to be, because if we.
But that's not part of the resolution.
No, it doesn't have to be part of the resolution, because we're only talking about changing the calendar. And the calendar, we changed already for the eighth at the last meeting, we did.
I thought you just said.
The eighth, we changed it, but he didn't talk about what, the give-back for the eighth. We changed that already at the last meeting. So all we're talking about now is the first and the second. And then, Doctor, excuse me, Mr. Forget, and I just promoted you. Mr. Forget, Mr. Forget will contact, you know, inform parents that the, the third is also going to be an emergency day. So, then there's the weekend, as Mr. Howard said, then there's Labor Day, and then there's the two Jewish holy days. So, so then that's, or, or the religious days, as you, as you suggested we call them. So, then the next day that the school is open would be the?
Ninth.
Ninth, okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
As you know, I'm always concerned about ventilation, so I'm assuming that.
We're not going to talk about ventilation, we're talking about calendar. You can talk about ventilation later.
In terms of them bringing all kids into the building, that the ventilation system will be up to par, because I questioned that about you before.
We, last Friday, we installed the Merv 13 filters in every classroom.
You said, I didn't hear. Merv 13 filters.
The Merv 13 filters were installed in every classroom last Friday. So all the unit events in every classroom have Merv 13. In addition to that, we have offices, gymnasium, that the ventilation system is on the roof. We added all the filters to all the equipments in the district. We are ready with that.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manoel?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Levenstein?
Yes.
Ms. Maida?
Yes.
Ms. Manoel?
Yes.
Ms. Burton?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.